You ready? So I'd like to call this meeting of the Neutrona County Planning and Zoning Commission together here this evening, and we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So for you folks in the audience, I'd like to introduce who we are. My name's Hal Hutchinson. I'm the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. To my immediate right is Robert Grant. To the far left is Ray Schulty, Commissioner, and to my immediate left is Commissioner Chad McNutt. Kristi Turner is the Planning and Zoning Director. Heather Malone Duncan, I think? Is that right?
Duncan Malone.
Duncan Malone, some combination. You're in the Attorney's Office, I'm not sure who does what, and then we have Jared Holbrook, who is Deputy County Attorney. All right. You should note that this commission is an advisory board of the Neutrona County Commissioners. Our decisions are subject to approval, conditional approval, denial, or modification by the Board of County Commissioners. For each application on the agenda, we will hold an official public hearing. The hearings are recorded, and there will be written minutes of the meeting. After the Board holds the public hearing, unless an application is tabled or withdrawn, the Board of County Commissioners will hold another public meeting for the application. Tonight, everyone will have an opportunity to address the commission. First, those in favor, then those opposed, and would have you come to the microphone or to the table here, I guess? Is that what we're doing now, Kristi? We used to have a podium up there. Okay, over here. When the Chair recognizes you, please come to the podium and state your name and address before giving your comments. There's not many people here tonight, so I'm not going to worry about a time limit. This is not a public forum for outcry or speaking from the audience. You must be recognized from the Chair before addressing the commission. There are two items on the agenda tonight, MS 23-1 and MS 23-2. All right. So our-
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One order of business. I do believe that the Board needs to nominate and elect a Vice Chair at this time, in the event that you are not here, so someone can run the meetings. So I would think that we should probably, if anyone wants to make a motion, to amend the agenda to allow the Board to nominate and elect a Vice Chair.
Should we do that now or do that at the end of the meeting?
I think now would be appropriate.
Okay. So for the Board's information, I don't know if you shared that with them, Kristi. Obviously, we've had a significant change order with the Board. The previous Vice Chair is no longer on the Board. We haven't met in three months or so. Well, since June, I guess. In January, there was an election. I was fortunate enough to be selected for the Chairman. Chairman Gutierrez is no longer on the Board, so that's what we're talking about. We need to hire someone to be, not hire, but we need to select someone to be that Vice Chair in the event that the Chair is not able to be here or do his duties. So with that in mind, Chair would entertain nominations for Vice Chair.
First, we need a motion to amend the agenda.
Oh, okay.[285.83][285.83](Laughter).
I second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? All right. So at this time, I guess we'll take nominations for the Vice Chair, and I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would nominate Mr. Robert Grant, to my right ear, as the Vice Chair.
I would second that nomination and move that nominations close, and we cast a unanimous ballot for Robert Grant.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. And it sounds like we had everyone, so, Robert, you're in?
Thanks.
Okay. We're ready to move on to the regular agenda then, right? Okay, so next thing we have on the agenda is consideration of the June 13, 2023, meeting minutes as prepared and in our meeting packet. And, Robert, you and I were the only ones there, but the way I understand, even if you weren't there, you could vote in favor of or opposed. So the Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from June 13, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to note that my vote was for the zoning setback. We got these turned around. Matt Mitchell was for or against, and I was for. So can we amend those? Okay. With that being said-
You'd make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve them.
As corrected.
As corrected.
Okay. I would second that. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any more, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as adjusted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes from June 13 are approved. All right. On to the regular business of the meeting this evening. Our first case is MS, and I don't know what that stands for. Major subdivision, 23-1. A request by Sean and Tondy McCool for approval of a preliminary plat for the City View Estates, a major subdivision consisting of three lots on a parcel of approximately 32.037 acres in Mountain Residential MR1 zoning district. Kristi, may we have a staff report, please?
So the case is MS 23-1 for the City View Estates major subdivision. It is a subdivision consisting of three lots on a parcel of approximately 32.03 acres in Mountain Residential MR1 zoning district. The property is on the east side of Casper Mountain Road, at the base of the mountain, along the south side of West Fork Road. Again, the zoning is Mountain Residential 1. The minimum lot size here is 10 acres. The property is currently undeveloped, and the surrounding properties are also MR1. The water source will be private wells, and the wastewater will be private septic. So this is a view of the location and the layout of the three lots. Again, with the plat highlighted. This is as it stands, as a full parcel, and with the divisions. The general standards for major subdivisions, the criteria, a major subdivision is a division of land into two or more parcels of 140 acres or less, and not classified as a simple sub. The criteria for approval is the subdivision consistent with the Neutrona County Development Plan and the Neutrona County Zoning Resolution. The proposed City View Estates is in compliance with the zoning resolution. The zoning is MR1 and has a 10-acre minimum. All lots on the proposed subdivision are 10 acres or over. The intent of Mountain Residential 1 is to establish and protect areas for low-density residential and agricultural purposes. This subdivision is also in agreement with the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. The proposed City View Estates is located within the residential designation on the future land use map in that 2022 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, around that little blue circle. The subdivision is a subdivision in conformance with the general provisions, Chapter 1, and subdivision design standards, Chapter 2, and it is in conformance with those regulations.
Kristi, you meant Chapter 7. Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, Chapter 7. The applicant has provided sufficient water supply. The proposed City View Estates will have individual wells or water systems provided privately. Has the applicant provided a public sewage disposal system? The method of sewage disposal will be either, it will be individual septic systems provided by future owners. Has the applicant provided evidence to show all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards, are requiring special precautions, have been identified by the applicant, and proposed use of the areas are compatible with such conditions? The proposed City View major, City View Estates major subdivision plat has been identified with 60%, 65% of the plat having 3% to 15% slopes, and the remaining 35% with 8% to 35% slopes. Those may need to be addressed at the time of development. Provisions for necessary services, fire, police, schools, recreation, utilities, open space, transportation. The City View major subdivision will be within the Neutrona County Sheriff's jurisdiction and will require no new additional services. Is the subdivision appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, not detrimental to future development of the area, not detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of inhabitants of the area of the county? City View Estates major subdivision use will be agricultural and residential. There'll be no detriment to health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county. Document satisfactory to the Board that the improvement service district requirements have been met. Maintenance of West Fork Road is included in the covenants for City View Estates major subdivision and the neighboring subdivision, Casper View, instrument number 463222. Therefore, an improvement service district will not be required for this subdivision. And number nine is documentation that the subdivider has adequate financial resources to develop and complete the systems and facilities proposed. As stated, the required systems are in place. No financial guarantee is required. Planning consideration. Staff has received the following comments. The road and bridge commented that they see no significant impact with this subdivision. The Neutrona County Health Department reviewed the subdivision for suitability for small wastewater systems and say that they are possible but may require some specialized design for conditions. The State Engineers Office had not submitted a response at the time of this report, but I believe they submitted one later saying that they had no issues with this. The Neutrona County Conservation District commented on the slopes and slope types. Additional erosion control and sedimentation risk also needs to be addressed at the time of the development, as the runoff here is high. There are no identified flooding issues with this particular parcel. A copy of the covenants has been submitted to the planning office. As of the date of the staff report, staff has not received any written comments, and we sent notices to 44 neighbors. If the Board, if the, should the Board vote to approve the requested major subdivision, staff has no additional comments for this project. Staff also recommends that the motion incorporate by reference all findings of fact set forth through your discussion.
Thank you, Kristi. Any Board comments for staff before we go into a public hearing?
I'm good.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and fill us in on anything? I'm assuming you're the applicant for this. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself and fill us in on anything that we might need to know?
I'm Sean McCool, so I'm the applicant. And really, I don't know if I have much to add other than that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have after looking at the proposal and the plat.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Well, you might just sit there because we're going to go into a public hearing, and we're going to look for people in favor, and I suspect you're going to be wanting to be there. Maybe Mr. Svenson there, too. All right, so we're going to go into public hearing. This time, we'll call a public hearing open for the consideration of major subdivision 23-1, and that is the City View Estates, major subdivision that we're talking about. So at this time, would anyone or anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, would you please come forward?
I don't bite.
Paul Svenson, 49, Sagebrush. I'm the surveyor signing the plat for Sean McCool, and I'm in favor of his proposed subdivision. If you have any questions on anything on the plat, feel free to ask myself.
Any questions?
I have none.
Okay.
I looked at everything. It looks good.
It does, me as well. All right. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Mr. McCool, you might just put your two cents' worth in there.
Well, it's been, we bought this land a little over a year ago, and then we started building our house. We actually are building a house on Lot Number 2. And we'd always kind of thought maybe in the future, we would want to subdivide this, maybe sell, or maybe even keep some, you know, 10 acres for our kids or something like that, if somebody wanted to do something like that. What spurred this decision on, honestly, was things that, we've been building a house on there for over a year, and the world is a little bit different now than it was a year ago. When we started building this house, interest rates were two points lower than they are right now, and we've also had a year of kind of constant inflation of both labor and materials. So it was about, it was April, when really we're like, you know what? It probably makes a lot of sense to subdivide this land now and sell a portion of it off. And we did find a buyer for Lot 1, kind of ran away in April, so we proceeded with kind of this project then. Just, we have other projects going on in the county as well, commercial projects and things like that, that it's like, you know what? It's going to make it a lot nicer for us if we don't have to, honestly, be quite so over-leveraged on this project if we can sell a little bit of this land. So that's really what spurred it. And so then we engaged WLC that did the original plat for the land, and then we worked with the Health Department and Kristi Taylor quite a bit to see, just to try and make sure that we do everything by the book, so it's an easy, easy process. Met with the Health Department, we did our trench inspections on the other two lots and six PERC tests, and so we've kind of gone through quite a bit to get it to this point, and are, honestly, we're just happy that it's getting close, so.
I do have a question for you. Are you part of the subdivision directly across the road? We had that come in the past year or so. Was that you as well?
That's not me.
Oh, okay.
No. This is just, this is the, and we used to live just above here on Mary Hester, and we always watched this land. We lived up on Mary Hester Road, and we always wanted to buy this land, and, because it just is a little bit easier access, a little bit nicer. And so when it came for sale, we actually picked this up before, really before it even hit the market.
Beautiful property up there.
Thank you.
Just have one quick question. Is access to the, to the lots, is it off of West Fork Road?
It is, yes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, nobody seems to want to have any more access points off of the county road. Or is it State Road at that point?
State Highway.
State Highway. So I think there, you have to work pretty hard to do any more access points off of the State Highway. They don't seem to be very, very happy to grant that.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, call an end of the public hearing, and I guess the Chair would be entertaining a motion for or against the application.
I would like to move that we approve the application, MS 23-1.
Robert, I think there was an example.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there is.
Let's see. On page 6. Sample motion to approve.
Let me find it. Sorry. I note that the Board of County- I met, I note that the Planning and Zoning Committee has considered all the relevant factors, including but not limited to those set forth in the 2013 subdivision regulations of Neutrona County, and find that the major subdivision meets the general standards required. On that basis, I move to approve MS 23-1 and incorporate by reference all findings of fact set forth.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion before we move to the question? You guys are good?
We're good.
All right. So all those in favor of the motion to approve, I keep forgetting the name of the, City View Estates major subdivision, MS 23-1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, Planning and Zoning will issue a due-pass recommendation to the Neutrona County Commissioners for their meeting, I'm assuming later this month or in October?
September 19.
September 19. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. So on to the second order of business, the second and final order of business that I have on the agenda. Consideration of a request by MSJ Oilfield Services to vacate and replat Westgate Park 2 lots 33 through 35. This plat is a reduction from three lots to two lots, which will be identified as lots 34A and 35A. So Kristi, may we have a staff report, please?
All right, so again, this is case number MS 23-2 for lots 34A and 35A of Westgate Park Number 2. It is the request by MSJ Oil Services, Oilfield Services, to vacate and replat Westgate Park lots 33 through 35. It's a reduction of three lots into two lots, which will be identified now as lots 34A and 35A. The property is on the north side of Yellowstone Highway at the intersection of Nuclear Drive and Uranium Road, approximately two miles northwest of the Highway 2026 bypass. The zoning in the area is light industrial. In that zoning, it is a minimum of 1 and 1/2 acres with public water and sewer and 2 acres without public water and sewer. The property is currently subdivided and developed for use as light industrial. All the areas around are also zoned light industrial. Their water source is Vista West, and their wastewater is also through Vista West. Therefore, their minimum lot size would qualify at that 1 and 1/2 acre. Going through the general standards for a major subdivision, the subdivision of land into two or more parcels of 140 acres or less and not classified as a simple subdivision. Criteria for approval is whether it is consent with, is consistent, sorry, with the Neutrona County Development Plan and the Neutrona County Zoning Resolution. The proposed lots 34A and 35A Westgate Park 2 major subdivision is in compliance with the zoning resolution. The zoning is light industrial, and as I stated, it has a 1 1/2 acre minimum when connected to public water and sewer. All lots on the proposed subdivision are over the minimum requirement. The intent and purpose of the light industrial zoning is to establish and protect areas for light manufacturing and storage facilities. Number two is, the subdivision is in conformance with the general provisions, Chapter 1, and subdivision design standards, Chapter 7. Lots 34A and 35A of Westgate Park 2 are in conformance with the general provisions and subdivision design standards of the 2013 Neutrona County Subdivision Regulation. For sufficient water supply, the proposed lots of 34A and 35A, again, are serviced through the Vista West Westgate Service District. There is no change in service for this replat. The same stands for the public sewage disposal system. They'll be serviced through the Vista West Westgate Service District, and there'll be no change in service. In regards to the soil and topographical conditions presenting hazards, the Neutrona County Conservation District has no issues with the simple change proposed for lots 34A and 35A Westgate Park 2 major subdivision. In regards to necessary services for fire, police, schools, recreation, utilities, open space, lots 34A and 35A Westgate Park Number 2 is within the Neutrona County Sheriff's jurisdiction and requires no new services. Does the subdivision appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, not detrimental to future development of the area, and not detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county? Lots 34A, 35A Westgate Park Number 2 major subdivision use will remain light industrial. There is no detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county. Is their documentation satisfactory- Is their documenting, documentation satisfactory to the board that the improvement service district requirements have been met? As this subdivision is already a part of the Vista West, Westgate Improvement District, there are no, there'd be no impact to the service. The documentation that the subdivider has adequate financial resources to develop, to complete the water and sewage systems and any facilities proposed. Again, as stated above, the required services are already in place, and no financial guarantee is required. Staff received the following comments. Roden Bridge commented that they see no significant impact with this vacation and replat. The Neutrona County Health Department had no comment on this as it's on public water and sewer. The State's Engineers Office found no water rights, and the Neutrona County Conservation District had no issue with this change. As of the date of this report, staff had not received any written comments, and staff sent notices to 29 neighbors. Staff proposes that the Planning and Zoning Commission enter a motion and vote to recommend approval or denial of the requested lots 34A, 35A Westgate Park Number 2 major subdivision. Should the Planning and Zoning Commission vote to approve the requested major subdivision, staff has no additional comments for this project. Staff also recommends that the motion incorporate by reference all findings of fact set forth.
Thank you, Kristy. Any questions for Kristy or staff?
Mr. Chair, I just have one. So, the current lot lines pass through two of the buildings on that property? I think currently they do.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that, that is correct. So, this replat will correct those lot lines, allocate the buildings. They've defined the correct separation and setbacks for that separate, the, the middle lot line.
Thank you.
Yeah. Question?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Granger, would you like to come up and fill us in on anything we might need to know in addition to the staff report?
My name's Steve Granger. I am the surveyor for this project. Mr. Jackson unfortunately was not available to be here tonight. He wanted to, but he had prior commitments, so, so any questions that I can answer for you? But as you had pointed out earlier, the main reason for the replating was they wanted to remove the, the lot line splitting buildings. He wanted to clean that up and get the proper setback requirements, and right now, he's proposing that the southerly portion, they're going to utilize for their business, and the northerly portion, he's going to lease. So, that's his intended use for the property.
Okay. All right. Anything before a public hearing? Anything else you need to drill into? All right. Declare a public hearing open for the consideration of MS 23-2, and that is Westgate lots 34A and 35A Westgate Park 2 major subdivision. Anyone in favor of the application, please come forward. Steve, you're it.
I guess I'm it.
I take that you are in favor.
I am in favor.
Obviously. Okay. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone else, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Declare this public hearing closed, seeing no one to come forward for, in addition for or against the application. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of the application.
Mr. Chair, I note that the Planning and Zoning Commission has considered all relevant factors, including but not limited to those set forth in the 2013 subdivision regulation of Neutrona County, and find the major subdivision meets the general standards required. On that basis, I move to approve MS 23-2 and incorporate the reference, all findings of fact set forth.
Thank you, Mr. Shulte. Any second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, your application has been approved by the Neutrona County Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration by the County Commissioners, also on September 19th, I take it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we've been through the work items. Is there any? I see no old business, any old business, Kristy? Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second the motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned at 6:07.